Yeah, I'd like to call to order a planning commission meeting Wednesday, March twenty sixth, two thousand twenty five at six thirty three. Termination of a quorum. Mr. Kenny.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Reyes. Mr. Burke. Mr. Price.
Here.
Mr. Studley.
Here.
Secretary Anderson. Vice Chair Clooney.
Yeah.
Chairman Flynn is here for a full quorum of nine. Okay, emergency evacuation, the dodge you came in, lead out to the left, to the right. And if we please stand for President Lee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic, which stands on the ground, with this solemn decree.
Okay, we have approval of minutes, five point one, February twenty sixth, two thousand twenty five, entertain a motion for the minutes.
Take a motion we approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith, I have a motion second by Mr. Kenny. All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have a one year, one year expect, uh, extension for prior approval, six point one, Woodland Manor three, preliminary plan, major land development, comprehensive permit. Owner HK Woodland Third LLC. Applicant High Keen Management, preliminary plan approved, ninety-two unit residential development, consistent of ninety-two affordable units in Woodland Manor Apartment Complex, AP twenty seven, lot one fifty. Zone plan, unit development, PUD, with total property area approximately nineteen point two zero acres, and it's on Woodland Drive. Is anybody here for the applicant? Come on up, sir. Name an address for the record, please.
Okay, Andy Burns, uh, I live twenty-two Jordan Road in South Armith, Massachusetts. I am the managing member of HK Woodland Three, and uh, here today to express our continued support for the project. We are the owners, and I'm the managing member of the owners of Woodland One and Two. It has been a tumultuous financing environment, and we were hoping to have commenced on a major renovation and rehab of Woodland One and Two back a year and a half ago. And it's been very, very difficult to cobble together the resources to do not only an existing complex like Woodland One and Two, but then Woodland Three, which is ground-up development, the resources and the financial resources to put that together has just been really, really complicated. And we have sort of broken through that, if you will, in that we've brought in a new partner at Hall Keane, and are really energized with recent conversations with Rhode Island Housing, who supported this project way, way back, and is, uh, has expressed strong support for both Woodland One, Two, and Three. And I think it's, uh, the time has come, um, you know, and we're excited about it. And I, I hope that we can get a, a positive vote tonight, and we can move on and really start to dig in in the next phase. You know, there's, we've got a, we've got more engineering and more planning to do before we can actually get the financing lined up, and we're planning on going ahead with that work this spring. Any?
Sounds good to me. I don't have any objections. Anybody else on the board have any questions for the applicant?
Maybe, uh, mid to late next year is what I would promise, not promise, I would, I would target that. I think. Uh, One and Two, we're getting ready to, we've got the pieces in place to move forward with the renovations on Woodland One and Two. And that will, we're looking to get into construction on One and Two this year. I think it's optimistic, you know, I think we're looking at the middle to the end of next year on Woodland Three. But, uh, you know, the, the issue is, you know, there's only so many resources for these affordable housing projects, and the state sort of parcels them out. And I, I think we've been patient, and we've had a pretty good reception from Rhode Island Housing, and, um, hopefully we can get it across the goal line.
Right. Anybody else? Uh, before we ask for a motion, is, uh, is there anybody in the room that would like to make a comment on this project? Hearing none? Anybody on Zoom raise their hand? Like to make a comment on this project? Nothing? That's what I figured, but I have to ask. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Or, uh, and it's one-year extension.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a favorable motion for one-year extension to Woodland Manor Three.
That's it? Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Kenny, I have a second, second by Mr. Reyes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Good luck. Okay, next on the agenda, seven point one, proposed nine thousand square foot industrial building, preliminary plan, major land development, owner applicant, BJK Realty LLC, AP sixty, lot twelve, zone Industrial One, sixteen hundred Flat River Road, applicant is seeking the construction of a nine thousand square foot industrial building in the southeastern corner, associated with parking and landscaping, the dimensional variance has already been approved by this board, so we're just seeking, uh, the applicant to move forward. Anybody for the applicant like to come up? Name an address, please, for the record.
Ron Hampton, engineer of record, and, uh, this is one oh seven north.
Is that on the mic?
This is on. Uh, one oh seven North Country Club Drive, or Rhode Island.
Thank you.
There's really not much to add. I think the board was looking pretty favorably last time we went to master. We had it basically buttoned up, we had very minor comments from, uh, TRC, and we addressed those, and it was submitted into that packet. So, um, just, just to follow up, and if you guys have any questions, you can ask me.
So you read the conditional of approval from staff?
Yep.
Okay with that, and then the technical review committee you sat in, and that, and that's all been taken care of?
It's all been taken care of.
I don't have any further questions. Does anybody else have any further questions for the applicant? Hearing none, no. Entertain a motion.
Through the chair, uh, if you don't mind, I'd recommend just offering for any comment.
Public comment, right. Yes, just, there, there've been a change in the law, thank you Doug, uh, that, uh, preliminary plan does not need, uh, public hearing, only master, but we're gonna take public comment just in case. I know you reached out to the neighbors, but we're, we're gonna, we're gonna do that. So I don't see anybody in the, anybody in the room have a public comment? Anybody on Zoom raise their hand, any comment? Okay, thanks Doug. Now I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, uh, motion that we approve, the preliminary plan is submitted by BJK Realty for the property at sixteen hundred Flat River Road, assesses plat sixty, lot twelve, zoned I one, sites approximately three point three six acres, and they're proposing to construct a nine thousand square foot industrial building in the southeastern corner of the lot with associated parking and landscaping. The applicant was granted three zoning variants for the number of loading spaces, the minimum distance to residential structures, and the minimum landscaping buffers, uh, at a prior meeting. Uh, the, uh, motion for approval comes with, uh, three conditions, that the preliminary plan approval is conditioned upon strict adherence to the associated dimensional variance application as presented and approved, that the preliminary plan approval is conditioned upon strict adherence to the associated industrial performance standards narrative, which is included in our packet, and also any landscaping that does not survive would be replaced and remain in perpetuity as it's currently shown on the approved plan. I'd like to incorporate the, um, planning department's staff report into my motion.
And would the applicant want, uh, final done administrated?
Yes, we would like that to be final anonymous.
I will also amend my motion to include that, uh, final approval can be done administratively.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Clooney, and I have a second, a second by, Mr. Smith. Sorry. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're at director's report. Go ahead, Doug.
Hey, team, so, um, we've got some time. I thought that I'd put a handful of items on this. Some can just be an update, a loose update on things that are coming. If we were to take some time tonight, we could, we could try to make some progress on the two and multifamily dwelling discussion. You might recall, it was a few months ago, we had a dedicated workshop, and we spent some time on that. You know, where, where and how would we consider to allow two families and multifamilies by right? That's not an easy question, and we made some good progress. We've, we've actually got, I think, a solid direction in mind. To be honest, uh, I think that the, the nature of, of that discussion, when we get into it, is probably best handled around a table where we're looking at a shared map. It might be something that we can pull one of those folding tables, or maybe both of them right here. Cody, if we pulled two tables up right here, would we still be on camera for you? Is it, is it difficult for you?
I mean, uh, we've got, you know, we've got this, could, could we actually pull it off right here, Cody? And then you'd be using the camera where you're straight back looking at the podium? And we just bring some mics to the table? Before we do that, I'll just give a kind of high-level overview of, of some of the other, uh, pieces that are coming, so, uh, coming attractions. So, uh, one is, you'll see on this list of four items, uh, under director's report, one is cannabis dispensaries. The town has, um, made a loose commitment that we wanted to be part of the, um, next round of Department of Business Regulations licensing for a potential license for a cannabis dispensary in, uh, Coventry. We'd still need to write zoning to allow that use. The overall temperature is that, that we do, we do want to write, uh, an ordinance to consider where this can go. The real questions are, are we looking at this through a particularly conservative lens, where we should write this in a way where, um, they're perhaps put into industrial zones with a minimum distance from the nearest residential property? And the, the distance from residential property might be a, a significant distance, that would, that would limit the places where this use could go. Or are we looking at this with a more liberal lens? Uh, I'm looking to get a little feedback on that, just so we have a good starting space. This is clearly one of those uses that sometimes it's a cultural hot-button issue for folks. For some folks, they look at it as pure business, they, they'd like to invite another business into town. From a, from a use standpoint, I mean, the only issue is that it generally does generate more traffic than an average, uh, retail use. I mean, these are busy sites, so I think you want them in spots where you can access it from a traffic perspective, but, um, ultimately, um, the, this will be a town council, uh, matter. It'll be in front of the council ultimately for their decision because of the fact that it's, it's a bit of a, uh, it, it could go a lot of different ways depending on the cultural predisposition of the council. You know, I'm looking to get a little feedback, just so we have an idea on a starting point. Nothing much to talk about on that now, uh, other than just to say it's a coming attraction. I believe the town manager would like us to have, uh, for the planning department, and through the planning, uh, commission to consider an appropriate ordinance approach to that, and then to have it, uh, potentially in front of the council at some point in the early summer. So, we've got some time, uh, but that's, uh, that's the note, that's the update there. The next is, uh, I'll do roadway slash right-of-way design standards next. That was an element that we had scoped with our consultant, who helped do a handful of these other updates that you were all working on, and were just approved by the council. These would be changes to the subdivision regulations. That is a document that this commission has sole authority to approve. That would not be a recommendation to the council, that would be something that eventually you'll see a draft, and you'll get a chance to approve it. We've been making headway on that, we're looking at, um, in a sense, uh, just updating, uh, where our roadway standards are. I don't think we're looking at big policy shifts, to be quite honest. The, the, generally, I think that the town engineer feels good about what we have, uh, there's some tweaks we want to make, and then we have some ancient, um, profile graphics that find themselves at the end of the, uh, subdivision regulations. We'd like to update those so that they're not hand-drawn graphics from must-have-been, um, the nineties that they were done. So, uh, just as a coming attraction, that'll be coming your way. And then the next is the schedule of zoning district use regulations. This group is aware of the approach we've taken, um, that we had a number of uses that we felt, uh, should be allowed, and we should go from a not allowed to an allowed. We're talking about a range of industrial uses and business uses in our industrial and business zones. As you recall, uh, the, the town had taken a posture where, uh, many were allowed through special use permit. We turned all special use permits off a little over a year ago. We brought those uses back that were previously special use permits, and those did receive approval from the council last night. So many of the special use permits that were turned to a no, that staff felt, and this group felt, were low-hanging fruit, these were not nuisance-based uses, these were simple, straightforward, business and industrial uses were allowed. Now, you'll recall, when we went through that exercise of going through the use table, uh, staff and, and a, and a group of knowledgeable folks sat around a table, and we looked at, hey, why are we not also allowing this use by right? It makes sense, we're here, we're looking at these uses, we're making the distinctions for where something should just be allowed by right in industrial or business zone. This use was never a special use permit, but we should just allow it. Now that we took the first bite, which was we turned all those special use permits, those ones that used to be an S in the use table, we turned them back on, the second bite is gonna be to look at all those uses that were never allowed, and to turn them on. A majority of them are business uses that were not allowed in industrial zones. The idea is that I think the town's vision was originally, let's, let's preserve our industrial zones for strict industrial uses. The truth is, in a modern context, we're not getting the big factories, these industrial zones often turn into a hodgepodge of different uses. We should just be open to allow different businesses to occupy those spaces. We've got a lot of useful buildings, a lot of good bones in there. These zones are already, uh, adept to handle industrial type of, uh, uses, then they're fine to handle more commercial uses, personal services, retail, a, a different mix like that. I think a lot of the work there has been done. It's just a matter of, uh, you know, bringing it to this group for, um, you know, formalization, make sure you're comfortable with it. I think we, we kind of accomplished that about a couple of months ago, and we made the conscious choice of let's not take a big bite, let's take the smaller bite. I think we're ready for the second bite on that. And I think the, the council is aware that we're coming with another batch of code changes. So that handles three of the four bullets. The other bullet is the two-family and multifamily discussions, and that's where I think I wanted to use your time tonight to get into it a little bit. Before we start, um, let me just kind of pull the group on, on timing and availability. We obviously have a nice early night, everyone has a chance to, uh, get out of here a little early. To continue this discussion, we could take anywhere from a half an hour to an hour, but I want to be respectful of your time. Does anyone have anything that, a desire on timeframe that they want to spend on this tonight, open-ended, anything you gotta get to? What is, what is it, seven o'clock now?
Only kidding. Rick, you had a question.
The, the hour is not unreasonable for me, but before we do that, I just want to verify, again, going back a few years when this, uh, cannibalist, cannabis legalization came on, i- is there a current ordinance that basically bans that down wide? I recall a council vote.
I did not want it. I, I recall that.
So I just want to make sure you're aware of that. There was an ordinance that they passed on.
I'll have to look into that, and that, that ordinance might exist outside of zoning. Do you guys have a memory of that?
I just remember it was, uh, the whole council, uh, didn't want to go that route.
And that, and that might have been, how long ago was that?
Probably a few years ago.
At least five.
At least five. I mean, this is one of those issues that a lot of people have had different, um, positions on, and some of those positions have evolved.
That's a.
Yeah. I mean, this is one of those things that I, I understand it's a cultural issue for a lot of people, some people just don't like it, they don't, they don't want to, they don't want their town to be associated with it, other people see it as another business. Wherever you are on that spectrum, uh, I think it's fair to say there's a lot of people that have turned corners on it recently because of seeing what the states have done in the area. Five years ago, I don't know if there was a state in the area that had legalized it. Well, now, a lot of the states in the area, including Rhode Island, has legalized it. That might have changed the disposition of some of the, uh, council members. Also, we probably, we may not have a single council member that was there five years ago that's here now.
I also, just to, not to belabor at this point, because I think it is a discussion for another night, but at least from what I can tell, the state is a heavy regulator of those facilities. They have to have cameras, they're monitored by business regulation, they have to have security, they're only allowed so many people in the building at a time. There's a whole host of, uh, security measures in place. It, it was more or less the moral.
Yeah.
Ordinance of the council saying, no, we don't want that in our town.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I just wanted to make sure you were aware that somebody might have to do that research to find out if there's something that, or one law gets adopted that they go back and check and make sure it's not in, but through the prior ordinance.
Yep.
We talk about roadway and right-of-way design standards, are we talking about like maybe reducing the sixty-foot width requirement that almost every single applicant comes in?
That's exactly what we're talking about. I think that it's important to find the right balance. We don't want to narrow our code down to a point where there are situations where we wanted more, and now we feel like we can't get it. But if we are ninety-nine percent of the time granting a waiver on something, that means that the code might have, you know, be asking for more than we need. Sixty-foot right-of-way is a good example. Thirty-foot paved width of a roadway in the R twenty zone is another good example. We've got a, you know, applications where I, I often like to have the sidewalk standard there, because we had an application recently, it was a minor, and I don't want to get into the specifics because it's not listed on the agenda, but I'll just say as a concept, when we say that we want sidewalks with projects, when we actually do want them, it's nice to have that code in there. And I mean, that, when we want them is when they, um, they make sense, they connect to an existing sidewalk network, and oftentimes, sometimes developers are like, well, I, I didn't expect the cost of building that. Well, you know what? If you're building, if you're developing a property in that area of the town where we want strategic sidewalk connections, and, and you're bringing an application, uh, we're gonna expect it. So there are some ways in which we, we may frequently give sidewalk waivers, but there's a lot of occasions where when we need them, we really want to make sure that we've got the requirement in there. And that helps because keep in mind, there's a lot of projects that are decided by staff. We're not in a position to, um, you know, take as many liberties. We have to do our best to take little creative license when we make staff decisions. Staff is in a capacity to offer waivers, so someone, a minor project, a minor subdivision, we're talking about a subdivision less than nine lots, this board wouldn't see it. We want to know that we've got the right tools in place that guide staff, because we might have less discretion than this board to consider, you know, significant changes, and certainly not zoning relief. So, at, at a staff level, we want to get these things right, um, so that one, we're not offering waivers, uh, all the time, but also when we offer them, we feel like we're good about where our code is, and we're feel good about where we can offer them. So that's that, uh, as a, as a quick heads up on that same topic, uh, keep in mind, new state law has come out, there's new state legislation, there's a number of changes. The Speaker of the House continues to roll out some significant, um, changes to, uh, land use regulations across the state. One of them is that a minor subdivision, which is a, is a subdivision of nine lots or less, the, the current state law is that if it, uh, created a new street, that would trigger it coming in front of the board. You could do a nine-lot subdivision as long as they were frontage lots, slicing lots along an existing right-of-way. The new state law is saying if you create a street, that's also going to remain a minor, that's going to remain a staff-level decision. So another level of more complex project, uh, that would involve street creation, and the consideration of, of width of a street, sidewalks, all of those components, uh, are gonna come to just at a staff level. That legislation's not passed, but, um, it, it made it out of committee, and it's, it's heading for a final vote this summer, along with a handful of other legislative, uh, issues. So, just, it's, it's good for us to get our code in order, it helps you, and it helps staff, um, for what we need to do on these projects. Any other kind of questions while we're all at a mic on a high level? Feel free to use this time, any, any code that we generally touched on that you have questions about, want to give input on? My thought is, the next step is if we want to take whatever we've got, whatever one, everyone's comfortable with, a half an hour, an hour? My thought is the next step is if we want to take whatever we've got, whatever everyone's comfortable with, a half an hour, an hour. Make a little progress on multifamily and two families. The best way to do that is for us to pull one of these screens up, to sit around the table right here and to have a big map in front of us. So if you guys don't mind, let's, let's take the meeting down here.
We're just going to leave them, set it and forget it. Sound like you're not on the air. Except for you.
Stop singing.
I want you to always be worried about what you're saying. I think. In Coventry, you didn't mind the expectation that right next door, someone might build a six unit apartment complex. However. I haven't understood that there's certain lots in the area where someone might be able to do a six unit apartment complex, but give. Tools, as you guys may be aware. Ten units or more. If they're 10 units or less. Doesn't, doesn't, if there's a variance, then it will always bump up to the board. So those are the. Started to kind of group. Where does a multifamily feel like this is a certain size and then this is the next size? Two family would always be its own use. Two family is sort of a distinct use. Two of five. Those were the. We could start to understand it because what we realized is if it's a two family, you guys came to the determination that you'd be comfortable with a two family if they had 50 feet of space between the structure and another residential structure. Someone wanted to do a two family, you'd just say, hey, as long as you give me my 50 feet of space, I think we're okay. In these zones, they'd need one acre. Someone says, I'd rather build one two family. They'd take the same piece of land, they'd do it, they'd just make sure the building's 50 feet away from a neighbor. What would it feel like to regulate a project on this piece of土地? Feel to everyone. We got to the point where we thought a three to a five family needed 75 feet of distance. Then we started to recognize that as we got bigger and bigger, the projects were going to get bigger and things were going to look a lot less like a little townhouse. And they'd start to look more like an apartment complex. You get to, you know. I think that magic number's around 10 or something looks, you know, like if you have six units, probably like a few smaller buildings, a complex that kind of looks like it's a smaller scale residential. Once you get 10 units and above, it's hard to do that without it looking like a big apartment building. I think people were starting to say, that's where I want to make sure we've got a good center. Where we got the last time is we got as far as groups. 50 foot distance felt about right to this group. And then if you were between a three to a five family, 75 feet felt about right. That all still felt like small scales. The maps in front of you, everything that's in front of you, I don't need to get into, you know, those are resources if they're helpful. This map is just showing you where we have multifamilies in town. It's kind of worth knowing, R20. That there's some form of a two family or multifamily. We have them. They're largely likely pre-existing non-conforming conditions. There might be a few that were achieved through a special use permit over time. Largely, this is just how the community looked, the older areas of the city, I'm sorry, the older areas of the town just have these. I think that's enough background. The workflow going. Big topic issues.
Just real quick, what were the, kind of the green dots were what? Two family, what's the blue?
I know it's over there, I couldn't see it. Oh, six. Our two to five family.
Six plus.
Purple was mixed use. We had to.
That's how they called them. That's how they called them.
Yep. So that's not how we wanted to regulate them. Can adjust this approach anytime. When we put this. Just because we made a decision, this is not a. Everything we're doing. Questions as we get into it? Anyone want to jump in with ideas?
Not really, I think the buffer. Setbacks really be. Because you don't want to make them so you can't do it.
Yep.
Why do it at all? I think if we could set our setbacks, the distance between. I mean, if I lived in a residential area, I don't know if I'd buy six units. Depends on the land mass too.
Let's keep. It's code that allows you to convert any commercial. Any non-residential building, church, school, what have you, can be converted to residential by right no matter the zone. The way to think about it is residential is already invited to our commercial or industrial zones. The rule of adaptive reuse is that you just can't build anything. You have to work within the footprint. Well, if we're allowed to work within the footprint, what's so bad about allowing someone to build something next to it that would continue that use? There's an expectation in a culture that if I bought into a residential zone and I'm. I will be built near me. On permits come up, when any project comes up that brings a. Family residential neighborhood comes out and is concerned about the impacts to them. Use they're concerned about the property value. I think that's the toughest nut to crack. If we figure out a structure, how we want to allow these things in the residential zone, it's going to be easy for us to take that structure. Or maybe loosen it up a little bit. Our commercial zones, they are. So someone could build a big project in commercial and it could be right next to someone's single family house. So I don't, I think that the discussion of setbacks is still appropriate. Whether we want to use the same setbacks or whether we want to loosen them up. Commercial zone. In my opinion, sometimes the way to think about it is someone that bought a residential property right next to commercial, they have to accept that, listen. Rather live next to big box retailer, would you rather live next to a residential project? Most people would say the retail is going to be more of a nuisance. That's going to be more of a traffic issue. That's going to have hours of operation, I'm not sure about. I think that's the. I envision that when we get to the end of this, we're going to have a discussion about where in our business and industrial zones should we be thinking about these projects? And maybe when we get into the larger scale projects, we think about a code approach that would incentivize someone to say, if I want to land a 25 unit multifamily, I'm better off looking in these commercial industrial zones than I am.
Don't take away.
What, what is, that's another consideration too, because trash pickup, like what is it? But if it's four units, it's owned or occupied, just go pick up my trash. That, that's a consideration. I, I, I think your point's well taken about the, you know, folks that already have houses, I think the underlying density. As you indicated in the R twenty zone, I think they already allow. Two families, if you have a little extra frontage, I'm not sure about the lots, like thirty thousand square feet. Then when you get out, let's say in the, what's, what's this, two acres zone over here?
That's a, yeah, the light green, the light yellow is two, two acres.
That's usually the argument, how can they put that many units on something that's supposed to be zoned for acres, how can? So again, if we can kind of stick close to the, to the underlying land area requirement, then give extra consideration to setbacks.
I don't. And, and I think the tool to be thoughtful of for creativity in these projects is the dimensional variance. Special use permit, in my opinion, is not the right tool to use if you really want discretionary decision-making power. Special use permit is another way to say it's conditionally approved use, someone just needs, and the way that the law is written now is you need the right code that makes it a, a box checking exercise and then it's allowed. The dimensional variance, if someone was requesting a dimensional variance and they're bringing an application in front of you, let's say they've got a nice parcel of land, like more density. It would yield, let's say six units, let's say it's a three acre parcel in the. It could yield six units, they think that twelve is appropriate. They think they've got analysis to show that, and that can be a case-by-case decision, it could be that twelve is appropriate. When you guys look at it, you could say, you know what, look at this, they're tucked away, no one there disturbing. This is not a bad place to do that. When you get that and you're in a position where you can grant the project, you have the ability through a dimensional variance to adequately defend a denial or an approval. The analysis is still needs to be there, you need to grant. Findings, but findings allow you to build, to make a reasonable decision and to defend that decision. Make a case-by-case determination.
And I wouldn't get too, too concerned, because unless they've got a very large lot, to put in on-site waste. Handle more, four units, challenge unless they have. There's not many. So now you're talking about either breaking it up or putting in a very large septic system. And, and that's why I just, you know, people might get nervous about it, say, oh, how can they allow that, but the reality is they've got to check that box. And they've got to get potable water in, some could, some may not even have city water. Right, it can be, but I'm just saying, it, it's, it's still a challenge. That was an unusual project, again, given the size and they didn't meet the density, that was a compliment, if they just came in here and said, I want to put this many units. Right, right.
Well, and then, and keep in mind, buffering and setbacks are different things. Setbacks is just purely a distance, in fact, I wouldn't even call it a setback because I think we're going to call it a minimum distance because we're not measuring from a property line. We're actually going to be measuring from structure to structure, that's a minimum distance, we actually have that code in our industrial standards. We say that in industrial standards, an industrial building shouldn't go up, um, closer than one hundred feet to a residential structure. So, I mean, that's a baseline of what our zoning thinks is an appropriate distance between an industrial use and a residential use, it thinks a hundred feet is pretty adequate. So, you know, here we are, we're going to consider that, now, it's different, if you live within one hundred feet of an industrial district, you knew that when you bought your property. You knew that you bought something where someone has the potential to build something that close to you. Uh, I think most, your average buyer might not really realize it, but if they do their due diligence and they're really concerned about their setting, then that's real information. What we're doing, some people could say is, listen, I, I bought into a residential neighborhood, there's residential zones within a half mile around me, I did not expect to see a larger scale residential project here. So tha- that's the element that I think we're trying to capture, which is, uh, protect that interest by a, a, a single family owner. The other side of this argument is that we're living through an era where Coventry is seeing a very high level of development interest. You guys are well aware because you see the pre-apps. My projection is that, you know, we're a community, and I've said this number and, and it is eye-popping, but I think it's actually, it's not hyperbole, I think it's an accurate answer. In the, we're fifteen thousand housing units as a community. I think in the next five years, the planning department's going to see three thousand units be approved through this department. Center of New England's a big chunk of that, but we're seeing a lot of properties and a lot of proposals outside of Center of New England seeking density. I think that, that three thousand new units to this community, that's twenty percent growth in a short period of time. There's interest in Coventry. It's not about, you know, is Coventry ready to go or not, it's at our doorstep, it's about handle it the best way you can, handle it responsibly. There's an interest to be here, and I think a good way to handle some of that development interest is if you can find the right spots to do smaller scale multifamily. Right now, the only tools that people have is a comp permit, uh, or, um, we've got an applicant that's bringing the zone change proposal to them. Those are kind of, you know, unique tools, uh, some people aren't ready for that level of tool. And if they're thinking of a smaller scale investment and they're thinking of a smaller project, maybe finding that, that three acre lot in R twenty and trying to turn that six unit, um, multifamily, or maybe they, they seek a variance and ask for a couple of additional units. I think there's a lot of opportunity to meet that housing demand in a way where I think it could be in our sewered areas, and I think it could be, um, you know, generally a, a good approach to responsible development. So, I think that's enough background. I, I can only tell you this, um, there's two ways to go about seeking, well, multiple ways to go about seeking affordable housing. One is, a comp permit's always a tool that exists. In fact, uh, the state's heading towards taking away that even if we get to ten percent, the comp permit tool will still exist. The state's heading to a place where they, they always want to give developers that ability. It's hard to know where that's going to go, I think they may take some teeth out of a comp permit in terms of their ability to pound the table and say, you have to approve this. But I think it's a tool that developers are going to take, and maybe if we get higher, um, uh, if we're at a higher level of percentage of affordable or we're able to demonstrate we're making our goals, which to be honest, Coventry's going to be in a. We will be able to say, we're pacing out affordable at a good rate. And you guys have seen the projects where we've gotten commitments of eighteen percent where it wasn't required, we got a commitment of twenty percent where it wasn't required. Where, you know, we've gotten these commitments where when these units start getting built, um, we're going to show that we're pacing out affordable in a, in a new way, and that is actually our defense against an aggressive comprehensive.
And you know what, that's a good point, because you know why, that legislation that we ju- you just spoke about, where the communities already met their goal, they should raise the, raise the bar. In other words, it's not going to be twenty to twenty-five percent, if you want to commit in a comp permit and the town's already met the ten percent, then you go higher, thirty percent.
And so that's one way to get affordable housing, another way is through a regulatory approach, some communities have a tool called inclusionary zoning. They mandate affordable housing in every project, no matter what, they took that tool and they turned that tool into a mix of sure, communities, you're allowed to mandate affordable housing in any project, but now we want to build in a density bonus with that. The, the, their first iteration of that was so problematic that by the end of it, you know, the town's saying, I'm going to demand an affordable out of this. Every project, one out of every ten units has to be affordable, but then to get that, you ended up giving up like another three units of density bonus, and it was like. They turned the tool into something that was favorable for developers and the town realized, listen, I didn't want to demand one affordable unit, so I'd start handing out market rates like they were candy. The other tool is one that we've utilized, this board prioritizes affordable housing as a public benefit and amenity that any project can offer you. It's not required, but we've seen that if complex projects come in the door. If they learn and they know that if they offer some affordable housing, that helps the project reach its final approval, whether they need some zone change, whether they need, uh, just to know that the, the project's, you know, uh, meeting the town's goals aligned with what the town wants to see. Whether it's a variance, uh, there's, they're, we're writing a comprehensive plan strategy to talk about the fact that the department and this board prioritizes the inclusion of affordable units in a non-regulatory environment. When they're not required, we prioritize their inclusion and we're getting them. And that is another way where if someone could, brings a complex project to you, they're asking for, you know, I could get six by right, I'd really like to build ten. It's not out of right that you can say, I'd like to talk about how many of those can be affordable. Not going to be something that needs a regulatory trigger, it's just a conversation to have with them, if they say, I don't want to give you any affordables, you can say, I don't feel as good about that density then. It's, it's a bit of a horse trade, but to be honest, it's something that has had some level of success with this board, and the truth is, is that the board's doing it because they see that as adding value to the project. Somebody wants something that's more than what the code gives them, you're going to want to know, is there any way that you can add value to this project? And the truth is, is that, that has been a successful approach for a handful of projects that we've seen recently.
Yeah, I mean, a tra- almost like a trade-off. You know, so the developers develop a good working relationship, they're not just coming in and demanding, you know, this is what the code says, this is what I get, you know?
And honestly, we could look to try to codify that at some point if we wish to. You could get a multifamily and you could get a by right density bonus if you give us affordables. It's, uh, it can get tricky, and when you start to regulate affordables, then, um, I'm a little nervous of where the state law goes with some of these things, because the state law has found ways to say, if you're going to require an affordable, then the guy should get two market rates by right, uh, as a bonus, and like, before you know it, we've lost control of the tool. There's nothing that stops a project from seeking a variance, so there's nothing that stops, uh, this board in a by right environment, a variance environment, any environment, to say, uh, we'd be interested in seeing how many affordables you can give us. That obviously, that conversation changes if the person's asking for a discretionary decision, like a zone change or a variance, uh, suddenly they realize, I've got to impress this board, and I've got to bring a project that aligns with their vision. That's something that staff is, that's with applicants, that I think this board likes to see affordable, some people think that that's a, that's a negative thing, you're going to up, upset the neighborhood. This board has not taken that approach. When people are pre-apping projects with me, I tell them that that's something that adds. Real affordable units, um, out of these projects, I mean, we approved a project, seven hundred and ten units, eighteen percent affordable with no regulatory requirement. I mean, those are, those are, that's a high number of affordables. We're not, if we didn't ask for any affordables, we're falling behind. If we ask for five percent, five to six percent, we're staying even, we ask for ten percent, we're getting a little ahead. When we get eighteen percent, we're making some, some significant leaps. We're at like five percent of the total housing. There's still a purpose to get to ten, the real thing is that there's purpose and there's a real incentive to make progress, if you can demonstrate as a community you're making progress. Realistic goal, and you're actually pacing out, uh, then you're able to perhaps successfully defend yourself against an aggression. Like someone that we'd like. Backer, you need to work with us, or you need to, uh, maybe rel- you know, relieve some of these nuisance issues, when they know we're making progress and we, they know that we can use the comprehensive plan as a tool to help defend. The discussion a bit, when we're having those dialogues with those developers. So, I think, uh, um, this is good, it's like broad discussion, um, in terms of the raw numbers, the last we had left it was a two family, uh, was, we were thinking a fifty-foot separation distance. Three to five, we were thinking seventy-five foot separation distance, some, some of what helped these conversations is when we looked at the larger parcels of land that happened to be in the R twenty, people got a better idea of, man, look at that piece of land. Like older, um, and agricultural properties where someone just hadn't really realized that development potential, it was a piece of land that probably has been in someone's family, it's, they just haven't really wanted to build it the way they could, but it's sitting on potentially a subdivision, or it's sitting on maybe another six by right units, so. Uh, we can use that as a tool again if we want to zoom in on properties, I think the next question is if we're looking at properties, or if we're looking at projects that will be six to ten units. Different size and scale of development. The question is, what are we thinking for a separation distance there? I mean, obviously it's going to keep growing, we've got fifty, we've got seventy-five, you know, obviously it's going to keep growing, um, but I do want to get your feedback and, and your reactions, and we're happy to throw some applicant properties on the board. Alex, would you think you'd be able to remember, you remember that property, it was probably round?
On Black Rock, right? Also Black Rock. Had one on MacArthur Boulevard.
Yeah, MacArthur Boulevard. Yeah, that one, it's sale right now, a lot of interest.
Is that it guys, is that one familiar?
Is that? That piece in the back has, um, that's got some environmental challenges.
Yeah, that, that was easy wet.
That's Matura's piece, I know the lot. Well, that's, that's actually Hat Toys. And the one right below it, I think.
Is it Matura? They have to, is there, is there a certain degree to which the wetlands have to be moved? That one hundred percent of wetlands come out, or how does? Isn't it just that every lot has to show an acre?
The challenge with that parcel. Challenge with that parcel is. That's the one that I'm thinking of, I don't know what that was.
This was a parcel that we looked at.
That's Hat Toys right there.
Yeah, yeah, we looked at, this was a good thought exercise for, uh, Alex, if you would stay on that particular.
Someone bought that.
This was a good thought exercise, clearly that, that parcel has development potential. Uh, Alex, are you able to tell me how big that one is? Actually, there, you can see it. Twenty-two acres, now a lot of it's wet, and I think within our regulations, we could certainly talk about that differently, that's to your development yield, if there's a lot of wetlands. Our code already carries, counts for some of that. Subdivision, I think the code would say that you can do a subdivision, but every lot has to have, I feel like it was like a certain percentage or an acre minimum of buildable area. And in R twenty, it's like, well, the lot's not even an acre already. I think the thought there was, if someone was to develop, if someone came to us and said, I'd like to do a dense residential project here. What would the town's position be on it? We were looking at this as a parcel, where the town's position might be, that's not a bad place to do that, what we probably just not want to put that building right up against these people's backyard. Good question, um, I think if someone wanted to give us a series of two family, the truth is, is that I'd say that the series of two families, any of the two families needs to give us fifty feet. Still potentially approach that, now that's a good question, because some would say that a two family is its own use. And then some people would say, well, if you put three of them next to each other, that's a six fam, you should regulate it like it's a six family. What if they're, they're separate structures? It appro- it looks different, it would feel different on the ground, um, that's a good question, and I, I mean. Um, that's a good question and I, I mean, we don't need to have the answer to that, but it's a good question as to, does it have to be? You know, would they have to subdivide it and say, here's a property on its own, two families? Homary, a handful of two families on one property.
Condominium.
One eight unit building.
You can do four acres and then a one, you can get eight units. If, if they're all two families, why do you have to have that? You're buying into it, you know what you're buying into.
I would say, you know, this is good idea, um, the idea is this. The use of a two family is always meant in our minds as we regulate it to say, that's the use on the property. Two family on one property, I would say that's actually. Even if they're separate, an average planner would say, that's how we would regulate that property. There's a way for us to perhaps address that in the code to say. A multifamily development that is made up of individualized two family units shall have.
Multiple buildings, it could be two four unit, it could be an eight unit condo.
A little dangerous and when, you know, Alex will laugh as we toyed with this a little bit as the concept of if you have multiple units on one piece of land. It's really, it's a multi. Or not? Or not, because you're allowing multiple units on one. They're not creating a roadway and they're not creating separate lots, you're technically allowing multifamily on a property. Someone said. The family house on my property, uh, there's a theory of planning law that says that's a multifamily. Variance will allow two. On one lot, uh, if we get into this, I could see someone saying, I'd like to develop a series of duplexes on this property. Eight family code and this board, you tell me. But I'm comfortable with a, a smaller setback distance because there's still. A half, what if it's? Twelve. They're separate structure. And from an abutter, they look at that and say, man, that, that, that's. Parking system and structure as opposed to just, it's just individual lots, people pull up into their driveways. The shift of this, you know, it could go sometimes either, you know, different ways.
How is that different from Compton Meadows or? The cornfield, that's what they did, it's multiple units on one lot, they asked for that variance, they came and granted a compliment. But I'm just saying, it's the same thing, there's nothing wrong with those, if they can get the onsite waste water treatment. And if the setbacks, but I mean, it's like a co- it's basically a condominium, it's just like a condominium.
They wouldn't get a re- extra density. So. Density bonus.
Answer to that question is, why should they be able to do it? They paid their ticket, they paid the price of admission with twenty-five percent affordable. The twenty-five percent affordable gives them the right to approach the town. They could, they, oftentimes the builder built uh, Compton Meadow, I'm sorry, uh, Coventry Cross, it's a mix of single and twos. That, he could have developed that as one apartment complex, the reason why he chose the other version is because this, that's how he wants the market, that's what he thinks.
Yeah, that's where the market is, but and but by the way, the, the, there's a market for condominiums that have one and two bedrooms, there's markets for, as you just indicated. Duplex, 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 as long as people have a place to live, they look at what's the surrounding, what are the amenities on the particular property? I don't think we should discourage that as long as. It forms with the neighborhood and the underlying density, like in that case right there, that, that size parcel would support eight units and they said, I wanna come in with four duplexes. All up here. That's the onsite waste water treatment, got city water, not gonna cross the street, we're gonna preserve the area to the south.
I think we have the distance to the nearest.
And you got the distance to the navy, yeah, yeah, that's the key. Plus, we're looking at this parcel, the likelihood of that parcel, I think in the foreseeable future as, as business continues to expand over there.
So let me ask a question, let's say, let's look at this piece of land as a starting point, let's just create a hypothetical. One option is to build one twelve unit apartment. If they did that, this group might say, Doug, I'm gonna want. Nearby. About a hundred to two hundred, you know, I'm not gonna put a number. Now, let's say the developer says, well, what happens if I spread out the units as a bunch of two family, now I'm gonna give you six. A fifty feet is probably more than enough, in fact, it's gonna look like. When they choose a third option. I wanna build them in smaller units. Or not garage, but a parking lot that services them, now we're probably thinking a little more than fifty feet, less than two hundred.
Wait, more than fifty feet from the abutter or from?
Parking ability itself represents a different kind of feel.
Or commercial.
It's. Really, you know, like if someone's giving me an apartment complex, everyone understands there's gonna be a parking. Someone gives me two families that are spread out, everyone's gonna assume. Parking lot. Issue here, it's parking. There is a section where we talk about if, if you're developing your project. Maybe that's the key issue, if you were a neighbor, you'd probably rather see the backyard of someone else's house. Or maybe.
Parking lot's what you would want to have a distance from.
Or maybe with a parking lot, maybe not in R twenty.
Well, it could be buffered, it's buffered.
I mean, and my thought is if we have an R twenty land parcel like this and they're allowed to do twelve units. Do twelve units by right, let's just say that that's what that our code says, that's twelve units by right. Let's say we say we need to do this. You want twelve? Separation distance from the parking and the structure. Still, there's a lot of neighbors that might say, two hundred feet doesn't feel like a lot when you're living next to a twelve unit apartment complex. I'm pointing out advocates so that you guys can kinda.
Two hundred feet, you'd be looking where those two little white dots are in the middle and that's about it.
Alex, do you mind measuring two hundred feet from the rear of one of those properties, you'd probably be surprised, it probably gets you uh. Of one of those.
Right, I said it was, keep going.
You didn't want it to the house, I thought.
There's an angle at the top and then the, the feet is on the bottom. That's what two hundred. Foot buffer from. Now, that's where I'd say, this is an example. At this point, those neighbors are like, listen, two hundred feet, it feels like um, a bigger distance if you put a row of trees or you leave your trees in the way. And that's where buffering could come in and maybe buffering is something we talked about for larger scale projects, required minimum buffer of a certain uh, uh.
Is it two hundred feet from the property line or from a bit, from the structure?
You're talking about structure to structure.
So if he goes back and does it from the structure.
By the time you, you're, you're barely into your own property, that's two hundred feet from the structure. First of all, it's already a house.
See on the opposite end with that buffer, the highly dense buffer. They're not gonna see anything. So I think buffering is very important.
And if they can't provide one up from one side, I'll provide a landscape screen that they provide. And the idea is that, there's a, there's a project here that could take shape. I'm not saying that I, you know, no one knows, you know, here we are looking at a piece of property, for the record, you know, we're not actually considering this. Helps to see on the ground, what would be? Uh, the issues would be density, let's not go above even Steven, if they could do so many units even Steven, then I think that this group's comfortable seeing that in different formats. You get parking garage, or if you get a parking lot in a singular building and it's approaching, looking like a commercial operation in terms of the way the parking works. Your distance and we need some sort of landscape screen. To maintain the existing buffer. Buffer doesn't have any trees, it's a requirement to plant some. I think the visual screening, if, if I was a residential neighbor, that'd be what I'd be interested in.
I think that almost any three units above you, some sort of.
We can require that.
Yeah. We've seen that, it's funny, you think.
I've mentioned names, but.
Until you realize. You know, maybe it's uh, at any given point, you're just looking through a couple of tree trunks. Wide open. Hundred feet of legislative buffer, you can't see through that, twenty feet? Right through it.
Evergreen. No, in the winter, you're gonna see right through.
And even the evergreen, you know, eye level, a lot of the evergreens, it's all, it's all there. You're looking right through the, the bottom of it. So, you know, we've done that a little bit and sometimes when we have code that talks about, we'll leave the existing buffer intact. Sometimes there's not a lot of value. That you get with existing buffers if you can just see right through it. So, you know, there's always that opportunity to supplement with landscaping, we could write code that even indicates, uh, there should be, if someone's got a good buffer. They've got a, they've got thirty, forty feet and you can't see through it, there's no need to plant, they could have thirty, forty feet and then there's three areas where there's a gap. Guess what, we might say you need to supplement that gap with some landscaping.
On the west side of this project, there's no one.
East side, all the buffer in the world. The other thing is that um, I think the buffer needs to be maintained on the subject property. Someone's not able to say, well, the property next door to me already has a significant buffer, do you mind if I cut all the way to the edge, guess what, you could ask for a variance. And if that property next door to you is, let's say it's a, it's a conserved piece of Audubon land and there's not a house for another, you know, three thousand here, you know, feet away. Alright, maybe I'd consider. But if that's a piece of land that could be developed someday, maybe we say, no, you know what, I'm not gonna put it on your neighbor. Where they wanna develop and suddenly they, they're wide open to the views of your project, you didn't provide a buffer on your own. So, a couple notes that I'm taking is that I think we should be talking about a separation distance uh, between both structures and parking area. Or just structures, I feel like people can put the parking area wherever they want, that's actually could be more of a nuisance than anything else. Yeah. Yep, and uh, if someone gives us a series of two families and they like to space them out and they wanna treat everyone with its own individual driveway. Lot of.
Now, we're talking about zoning.
Right.
So then we still have another tool in the toolbox, which is to amend not necessarily the subdivision regulation, but development regulations so that if someone is developing a piece of property. To contain more than one unit or three to five units and we put in additional standards. Like we do for the buffer, for the number of parking spaces, we distance, things like that, the lighting. So that we don't disturb the, the surrounding area, I mean, it's almost like a phase two, so now we're not saying it's not allowed, but you're gonna jump through these hoops if you want it. I'm not saying hoops to stifle development, but hoops to protect the neighbors.
We probably, to allow this use, it's a mix of both zoning and subdivision regs. I personally think that a lot of the nuts and the bolts, uh, when you get into little details like um. The design of how parking should work, uh, some of that's better handled in subdivision regulations, but keep in mind, um. The separation distances, I think they should be in zoning.
No, they should, but the point was this, once we do the zoning, that's a council action. The subdivision regulations, this board can amend.
Correct.
We can amend them every six months, we can amend them every year, we get someone that slips in, we find out, we go, hey, we got a problem. These things are getting built and we don't like the way it's coming out, we just amend our own regulations and we put in the extra layer to protect the earbuds.
The, the, the big difference that you should be mindful of, as you regulate these things with the different documents, is I don't disagree with what you're saying, the more you get into the nuts and the bolts, the more it feels like that should be in our subdivision regs. Cause that might need some fine tuning, um, if it's in the subdivision regs and people can't meet it or don't wish to meet it, they're asking for a waiver. If it's in the zoning and they can't meet it or don't wish to meet it, they're asking for a variance. The standards for giving a variance uh, trigger different levels of review and that's where you get that great discretionary decision making. A waiver, you have the right to deny a waiver, but it's a different thing and it's a much lower level, so you kinda wanna save, if you really mean it. And you wanna make it hard for someone to get relief, put it in zoning, if it's something that's smaller and it's more of a nuts and bolts and you're willing to work with them or you wanna tweak your own code. Uh, but you, if you, if they want it, you're willing to give it as a waiver, then that's where you put it.
Yeah, but my point was, every case is different, as you said, you might wanna require buffers in the subdivision regulations. What's the, what's the existing foliage out there? What, what is it currently counting?
Without seeing the project.
Right, you're going, right, right, it's, and there's no one size fits all. Like I said, we're not trying to stifle the, oh, you don't wanna make it so easy.
Well.
Single project.
Alex, do you mind throwing on the screen zoning of, of buffers? Section of zoning on buffers, um, we have buffers in zoning right now. Um, we probably have buffers that describe what a buffer between a multi-family and a single family should look like. Uh, that section of buffers actually describes the buffer distances between any uses, describes buffers between commercial to residential, commercial to industrial, commercial to multifamily, multifamily, like so. Um, if we're talking about buffers, you know, this is our baseline starting point, if we wanna adjust them, we certainly can.
Bad projects where there's a fifty foot buffer, but we want more screening.
Alex, you know what?
Talking like, we're talking, we're talking buffers versus screening, those are two different.
Well, buffers, in my opinion, setbacks and separation distances is one component. Buff- buffers is the landscape content.
I just saw, when he goes to, but see landscape buffer?
Yeah, yeah, so this is, this is what we're talking about, this is a table that we have today. Now, keep in mind, it has code that says if your proposed use is a multi-family, then you owe us ten feet of a landscape buffer to single family. So right now, we, we can change that, I mean, if we, if we're adopting code where we're being, well, let's just say we're being more permissive of the use of multi-family, we could say in response to that. This code also talks about multi-family if it's one thing, we're talking about multi-family as if it's gonna be potentially four or five different categories. We could have, this table could get amended to say, two family, no problem, three to five family, little buffer. Six to ten, a bigger buffer. So, you know, when we talk about where we're gonna regulate some of these things, staff are gonna draw from what the tools we already have are, I mean, this is one where we talk about buffers, we're probably gonna build that into this code. And, you know, we've talked about, okay, great, separation distance is one thing, buffer is the next. You know, a buffer, uh, three to five, I'm not as worried about, um, maybe ten, maybe a, a ten foot buffer works for a three to five unit. Ten and above, you guys might say, I, I, I want a bigger buffer. And if, and you might want language that says if the buffer doesn't can, doesn't in, doesn't provide enough screening, that that buffer can, should be supplemented with additional planting. Cause the idea is you wanna, a visual screen.
What I find interesting is that, that chart rate there, multi-family to single family and. Then you're in the commercials, multifamily, the commercial, it's actually more, and I can see someone wants to put a small, let's say, four unit apartment in a commercial zone or an industrial zone, you'd think the buffer would be less.
Oh, is it multifamily?
Yeah, but that doesn't make sense to me. Uh, there's, we got wonky code all over the place, but like, that's a great example, like, why do we think, if you're building a multifamily, that if you're next to a single family, please give us ten feet, but if you're next to commercial, you gotta give a big buffer, like, we're protecting the commercial?
No, we're protecting the multifamily.
No, no, well, they might say that, but the truth is that the inverse exists, the commercial, the commercial has a buffer to multifamily. What's odd is that why would the buffer from multifamily to commercial be more than the buffer for multifamily?
Multifamily developed.
Right.
Is it multifamily taxed as commercial though?
Multifamily does get taxed differently than single.
So why isn't using a commercial buffer?
I mean, you know, the use is, the use is different.
It's ten feet.
Well, there is, there is a theory in planning that, you know, residential to residential, we should be a little mindful of our buffer. I'll tell you, we get single family subdivisions, and the neighbors say, I need a buffer, and to me, it's like, you're a single family, they're a single family, you know, who, who a buffer? Multi-family is a different use, but. We, in a residential context, is not as big of a change of setting than, uh, a commercial. Someone wanted to put a big box retail next to you, you're gonna say, I want a big buffer, if it's a multifamily, you're probably gonna say, I can live with a little bit of a, of a slower buffer, not as busy. Um, but, I mean, these are the issues that, you know, this is helpful. Feedback on, I'll put it to you this way, um, the buffering is worth. Uh, that we need to build it in. The buffering is something that we wouldn't be just starting fresh, we'd start from where we're at. Build from here. You know, I still think that no matter what, the buffering is, is gonna happen, and I think that this table would get amended and multifamily would get broken out. It'd be a multi-three to five, it'd be a multi-six to ten, it'd be a multi-whatever.
And, and again, the, the point was that if you're building a multifamily in a residential zone and you're gonna be abutting commercial, that's a lot different than building a multifamily. On a commercial property, because now it's allowed and you're next to other commercial properties, why should you have to have a giant buffer? It may be perfectly suitable to put in, or five units, pack them in, put all their parking in the front, give them the sources they need, they may, they may say, we don't even want any extensive buffering.
Good example of, um. That applicant owed us more than a ten foot buffer. That applicant cut into their own buffer inadvertently.
Where is it?
Area for development and they started cutting into their buffer. We recognized that they were actually committing a zoning violation. Regardless, they had to maintain that minimum buffer distance, uh, for, that was a project that was from industrial to single family, fifty foot. You owe us a fifty foot buffer, now that's to say, a property that doesn't happen to have a fifty foot existing buffer, that, that's not to say they're gonna get punished, if you have a fifty foot buffer. You're an industrial property, you live next to a single family and you start cutting that buffer shorter than fifty, you've created a zoning violation. We recognize that in this case, and we said, uh, well, there's two ways to approach this, one is to approach it as an enforcement, the other is, you're looking to build.
Yes.
Like, or a mitigation, or a variance from that buffer, either we head towards an enforcement and you have to replant that buffer, which we knew they wanted to build. Or you seek a variance to reduce the buffer, in exchange for a nice series of planting. Because sometimes a fifty foot buffer isn't as valuable as a dense row of abrevieties lined up right where they should.
It's a better project.
So, you know, but that's the same theorem of, uh, some of this code, if we had a multifamily project, and let's say they can't provide us with thirty feet of a buffer that we might say, it's a large scale multifamily. A, a dense row of abrevieties, a nice way to mitigate the need for that relief, oh, I need zoning relief, great, you need zoning relief. What do you, what can you do to show me that you've earned that zoning relief, how are you mitigating the impact? You know, that's, that's where you can work with people and they can achieve projects. Um, I think that there's a lot that can be done, where someone might want a denser residential project, they want more units. They wanna be a little closer to a property edge than they should be and they, they don't have the buffer existing, but if they give us. A tall, dense row of abrevieties, a lot, that can go a long way for your average residential neighbor.
I think the neighbors paid out, by them encroaching into the buffer.
Yeah.
They got a better project.
And this is, this is, this is what we used to have, was the ability of special use permit to make these general broad discretionary decisions, that's what a special use permit used to do. I'd like a multifamily, it's a special use permit, they're in front of a board, map, it's impressive on the board how they're, um, you know, not creating a nuisance to the neighborhood. Abiding by the comprehensive plan, and then the board can just make all these discretionary case by case decisions. Can't do that anymore, but what we can do is create a regulatory structure, where if they give us something that's by right, it's fine, if they need relief, we look at all those case by case issues. Now, that's where you get to look at it and just, this is a good project, as long as they give me a buffer here and they keep a separation distance from there, the rest of it, I can work with you. So. I think one thing that we should get into is, um, we've got, uh, and we're will, we're willing to revise all these numbers, and we're willing to revise the approach, like, when we talked about fifty feet separation distance between structure to structure. Can you go back to the map, please, the, the Google, I'm sorry, the. A little bit less than fifty. Yeah. Oh, that's already. It's eighty feet right there. So, you know, one thing to keep in mind is if we wanted to keep it structure to structure, or do we wanna go structure to property edge? On any of these.
You go from the property line or to the building, whichever is.
So, are we thinking about a separation distance from a structure on the subject property, meaning the structure is the multifamily to the property line?
Think because if those houses were pushed thirty-five feet from, from the front set. When you went from the back of the house, be less of a buffer when you get to the property. Um, the house could be pushed back to twenty-five feet from the back rear setup. Or it could change. Change their separation.
Your average residential property owner here is probably gonna care about a couple of things, they're gonna care about what they can see outside their windows. And they're gonna care about it, they've got a backyard that they're used to being able to enjoy, they're gonna wanna know that that backyard has the same protections that the house has. They can enjoy the whole area, great property. Property is protected from a, a, uh, more intensive use.
But you could do, you could do a hundred feet from the building to building, or thirty-five feet from the property line to the proposed building, whichever is greater.
From that, say, number fifty-two, you're at eighty-six at the property line, so that means your structure's gonna be fourteen feet from the property line.
Or, like you said, or you could be thirty-five, in that case, the thirty-five.
And aesthetically, we could put some design standards where they're not built on a brick box. They're putting, they're doing something that fits in the name.
So, um.
Lots of development plan regulations for these apartments.
No flat rules, the, you know. Residential properties that are existing.
Yeah, that's one thing too, we can, we can insist that.
I wouldn't want a commercial looking building like a doctor's office in the middle of a residential area.
We can, we can write code that's, that multifamilies, um, need to have. Can't talk about it, but you'll, you'll all see it soon. So, long story short, I think what I'm picking up, that there perhaps a need for a separation distance between the structure and another nearby residential structure, and then the structure and the property line. And to think through.
I like that idea.
To think through whether we, yeah, it's, it's Rick's one good idea for the night.
It's getting late.
I had another one, but I'm not gonna.
He's just warming up.
Um, if you had a two family, tell me about what you think is an appropriate separation distance, structure to property line or structure to structure, keep in mind, we're probably talking about a, a dis, an R twenty, and all of this conversation, let's assume we're in the R twenty. Imagine that the separation distance of a setback already exists, I believe it's twenty feet from the side.
It is.
Yeah, Alex, do you know offhand what's the rear twenty? That's sixty.
Thirty-five?
Alex, do you mind looking up the front? So, imagine that a single family can't be closer than twenty feet from the property line, what should a two family be doing? Has, has EG now filled the frontal lobe and?
Would we actually double that to forty, if you, if you single, yeah, for two single houses, it would be twenty feet.
Is a lot.
Keep in mind, here we're trying to come up with a regulation for a two family, I mean, we already tell singles, twenty from the side, forty from the.
Theoretically, they're gonna have an acre, is it, to get the density, right? So, thirty's not unreasonable, forty might be a little excessive. Could be a narrow. Talk about anything from a hundred twenty, remember, a hundred twenty feet of frontage. Twenty to twenty's forty.
One acre.
Sixty feet.
One acre is sixty.
Yeah, if it doesn't, if, if, if an R twenty lot does not have water, then that means that they need to have twice as much water. Basically came up with the code that said, you need, you need to have water to have the density.
Again, depending on the amount of frontage in the R twenty zone. Sideline setbacks, hundred and twenty feet down to an envelope that's only sixty feet wide.
John, did you ever permit a two family in your time? They were allowed by special use permit, but I'm looking at the code behind me, we had a dimensional regulatory structure for two families already built in. Um, but I don't think they were ever allowed by, right, I think they were always allowed by special use permit, so it meant like, hey, here's code that you should follow, but by the way, you're going to the zoning board no matter what, whether you meet it or not. But, you know, if you don't meet it, you need a special use permit and a dimensional variance. Yeah, well, uh, I'll tell you what, um. The development of less. Would be a staff decision until they need zoning relief. Considered a minor land development of less. If that minor land development, it stays a minor, but it gets bumped up to unified, you would see a project of, of nine units or less as a one stop preliminary plan only. Um, in the same way that, um, you guys saw a couple of. Alex, did we have any minors that got bumped to four? Some more.
The thing that puzzles me is we've, you know, it slipped my, already got code for two family dwellings in the R twenty zone, thirty thousand square feet, the only difference is that there's an additional frontage requirement. They still, they list all the frontage, the sideline and the rail line setbacks. Oh, in fact, I think if anything, the one seventy-five is actually a deal breaker.
I think the key difference there is that we're giving you a density. Different than what we've. Do a two family, you need thirty thousand, but that's not twice.
Right, that's what I mean, but it's already allowed.
Well, right now, the use is turned off, those regulations live.
Oh, but it's in the table with an S that we can't, we don't have the other, okay.
And you're gonna, so keep in mind that before, even that's the code, you had to get a special use permit to even consider it. So if the board said, you know what, um, in this area, thirty thousand doesn't feel like enough, I'm gonna deny you. They had that right to deny them, even if they met that code, we're putting this into an environment where if they meet the code, they can't be denied, so that's why we're taking a more conservative posture, we don't have the ability to deny it a discretionally, we wanna make sure the code covers us.
Go through the zone, look at where all these multifamilies are, how many are even on thirty thousand square feet, I don't think, I don't think that's a bad regulation, I'd actually reduce to one seventy-five.
Well, the question is, I mean, we, we've sort of been working on a policy framework.
I know, I know, but I forgot about that.
That code doesn't take that approach, but also that code relied upon the fact that if there was just something that made it smell bad to the board, they could just say no. So, you know, keep in mind, that, that code.
That's why they had the special use permits, that's right, who lives next door, oh, it's so and so, no, you're not.
Well, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot that goes into all these sites on the.
Have one next door and not on that one.
So, I mean, that, that's the truth, is that I think there's a good home for multifamily on a lot of law. But you need to get into a case by case basis, it's hard to write code that addresses the right way to handle multifamily across the whole town, it's not hard. Look at a single property and say, I'd be willing to accept twenty units here, as long as you give me a buffer here and a distance here and you design it like this. Well, we used to have that, that was our special use permit, we don't have that anymore, so we're basically crafting something. That, hey, if, you know, we wanna, we, we wanna conserve posture on a by right project. But if they need a variance, that this board would certainly entertain it. Separation distance, uh, for a two family, um, what are you guys thinking from a, for a two family, from the edge of the structure to the property line?
I've already built in, right?
That regulation, it looks like we made a previous regulation, so to keep in mind, this regulation isn't really turned on and we can revise this. This regulation assumed that the, a two family should be, have the same setbacks to a property edge as a one family.
Cause remember, if the house is bigger, it's already kind of built in, you're still no closer to the neighbor than you would otherwise been, just. It's up and down the side by side, still have to be a minimum quiet distance. Which is bigger, under that code, you need more frontage, we're not talking about more. You, you want to increase the size.
We would say, if this was written for the code that we're thinking of, the, the one difference is, I don't, we wouldn't have a difference on frontage. I don't think the town was not considering that, um, you want a multifamily, your lot needs to have more frontage, this, it wasn't, it hasn't hit me yet that that's gonna be an important requirement, I think.
No, no, I think the one twenty consistently was fine, I think you said you were gonna increase the area.
Area, the area there was.
Fine, that's more of a driving factor.
Yeah, yeah, so I would, that, that lot size on the two family, I'd say should be forty, which would be the even Steven approach to density. And then the question that we had is, if you were to ask this group twenty minutes ago, what's the separation distance, we would have been thinking, well, we're probably more than a one family. The separation distance between property edge to the structure should be more than a one family, um, but you're looking at the code, so I don't know if it gives you a better sense of, uh, double the code, should it be?
If you left it the same and you did the build in the building with the greater of, like I suggested, in other words, you gotta be at least. You're gonna be fifty feet from the abutting building, or twenty feet from the sideline, whichever is greater.
Awesome.
I mean, it kind of depends, cause if the abutting property faces a street. If you put two units backyard, they're already gonna be.
They're already gonna have forty.
Well, they're already gonna be forty feet away.
So you, you're likely to be working just with regular story setbacks. So, let's just say, you know, you have this property or the one that we were looking at. Mostly, most of the development would be in the rear yard. Most of those houses would already be giving you at least forty feet. What you'd be saying is if you're building a two family, build it in the same way that you're building a one family. For whatever reason, where you're building, there happens to be a house right there, then you're gonna need to push farther away.
Yeah, I, again, a two family, I don't see where that's such a big upset. Do you think it's R twenty zone? Issue comes when you're three to five units, six units, or then you're talking about setback.
Well, let me ask this question to the board. Who here lives in the R twenty zone? If, if the neighbor next to you happened to have a double-wide lot and it happened to be vacant and they built a two family, there was not another two family on the block, do you think that that's something that, uh, would be a disruption to the character or would it be something that you think you could see?
My neighbor has sixty thousand square feet. Oversized range ranch, backyard has a commercial garage-type structure. Boxed commercial vehicles, then screen and bucket, and he, he's got the twenty foot from the setback on my side of it. And I'm twenty. And on the other side, I went for a variance and I'm fifteen feet from the neighbor's property. This house faces the other way. And there's no windows on my side, it's just garage, but in my opinion, he's too close to me because he's higher and I don't care how much screen he put on their window, they can see right.
Put two units on one. You made two units in one building, would think it's right setback. If you split that lot, it would be twenty and twenty in between the two structures. If you're putting in one, I would think it would be forty. Because you'd have less of a setback.
Here's the problem, Ron. If you got a hundred and twenty feet of frontage in an R twenty zone, you require forty feet sideline setback. That only leaves you a building. Isn't, forty feet's not even adequate to put the two family up.
It's possible that the lot is placed big, but it's just long and wide.
Yeah, that's why I think that's, and that's why.
Mine was three forty.
Again, if you, just think about it, if you're next to it.
Size means a lot if you're gonna put multi-family.
But two families, a, a two family's a lot different than three and up. I mean, it just means you got single person, maybe a one bed, two, two-bedroom units, maybe a three-bed and a one-bed. You're still gonna have parking. Remember, they gotta have onsite wastewater tanks. Most, most of. They gotta have, they're probably gonna have public water. So, how, how many, you know, what's the size of the building? And if you go right on Howard Avenue, I don't know if it's on here, there's actually a two family, right? You wouldn't even know it's a two family. They're side by side and right next to a single family, all around the degrade site, there's that one. And I know there's, there's a ton of them down, down in this area back here. Was looking for the one on Howard Ave, I don't, yes, it must be this one. I don't think, I don't know if that's it. There's a two family side by side.
Probably an illegal two.
I know what you're talking about.
Well, it's right near Chase Field. It's actually between Chase Field and, and Hill Street. It's Hill Street, not Howard, Hill Street. Howard Avenue, there's, there's a, there's a raised ranch with a, with another unit next to it.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
All of it in law. You know who it is? The guy came to us, remember, and then he built the house next door. Said his daughter lived there.
That's what I'm thinking of.
Yeah, so he already had a two family and then he cut another lot out, put another house down there. Again, I don't think the sideline setbacks for a two family in the R twenty zone. Look around, look at the size of these lots. There's two families that are on fifty feet, seventy-five feet wide. They don't seem to create a adverse situation.
You know, as I'm thinking about, write this code, there's no doubt that we're gonna have a setback from these structures. There's always gonna be a minimum distance from a structure to a property. Actually regardless of whether that's a residential property or a commercial property, we're not gonna allow people to build these things right to the property edge no matter what.
Right.
And that's just normal code. Uh, so we're probably should be thinking that structures will have a setback. The other issue is there's gonna be another regulatory structure with separation distance from structure to structure. So that, that is one of those things where we should be thinking about, maybe a two family, um, doesn't need a hugely different setback structure. We should be thoughtful, what's that separation distance from a two family?
From the neighbor.
From another structure. Um, and perhaps, I mean, you guys think, think about if you, if you were in that single family.
Well, I'm thinking of my piece of land, right? You could, I could have built, if it was never touched.
Two families.
You could build two two families. You could build, you could build four units. Instead of having two houses, I could have two, two families. Is that what you want? I think the two houses, if they're here.
Or, and Ron, you could have always then built a four-unit apartment complex. If, if, I mean, that's the other thing.
How, what was the total amount of land?
Uh, o- over one point four or one point five acres.
So, like.
The front.
But at twenty thousand square feet per unit, how many units?
Of three? Yeah, of three.
So you could, three units, just under a hundred feet per one. The question is, how far would you need? Probably not any different than the distance.
I just wanna, you know.
Well, no, I mean, that's the thing.
Two family in a residential area.
This is the thing. Staff don't have as good of a, for the culture of these neighborhoods. Someone willing to tolerate, someone that's fine, uh, a misplaced.
Well, there's an, there's another tool also is now what you'll see. Developer comes in and puts in a subdivision. He can trump the zoning code by deepening on the process at the time the subdivision says, no two family well and sell a lot in the subdivision. And that takes care of that.
They can, anyone can deed restrict.
Right, so that might be what's, you'll, you'll see because he's gonna say, listen, I can't risk putting this in and all of a sudden, somebody does a knockdown. Let the house go to shit, rents it out, then does a knockdown, says, I'm gonna go into the town court now. Might pay four hundred thousand dollars for a house, let it run down, knock it down, two hundred thousand dollars per, per lot, whatever it is. That's another. So, we, we shouldn't really assume that like this nice of a subdivision right here, someone's gonna come in, oh, there just happens to be a house in there that's run down and they knock it down. Same side by setbacks. And again, if you have the requirement with the distance to the abutting building, a lot of these clusters, the numbers would never.
The, the issue is most of those won't have lots that are big enough.
Right, right, that's the other thing, right. So that's, that's the thing. So you really don't have to worry about somebody coming in unless they got an oversized.
They have to have an oversized lot.
You have to find, you have to have the oversized lot. We're, we're thoughtful about those random lots and you guys have seen, sometimes they're double-wide. Sometimes someone, there was a subdivision, someone bought a house and they just have a vacant lot next to it. Truth is, if that house is broken down, it down, build a two family.
Well, if they needed the extra lot, the, the two, it's, it's not gonna be any closer to the abutment than it would be with the two single-family houses. And if they combined it to a two family, it's actually gonna be farther away.
You would assume so. I mean, I think they'll push the two family to one edge or the other.
That's why I like the idea of not necessarily changing the setback so much as adding the maximum distance of either the minimum setback or the distance to the abutment property. Cause that kind of protects the people that, they're only twenty feet from the setback. You're gonna go in and put up a two family. You gotta also be fifty feet or sixty feet from the abutting.
So, is an appropriate distance, if we had a setback structure in an R twenty, catch, single, just like you see it up on that chart, what would be the distance in structure to structure? We had thought fifty feet might be appropriate, but the truth is, is fifty feet probably doesn't account for your setbacks, probably add up to typically that'll already account for more than fifty feet.
Right, cause they're already supposed to be twenty feet from the sideline and if it's the back of the house, they're gonna be forty feet plus the twenty is sixty feet, so. Might be more than that, might be seventy.
Truth is, there, there might be a house that for whatever reason found itself non-conforming and it's just right, right at the property. So, we're working to protect those guys. Are we thinking fifty feet or are we thinking sixty or are we thinking?
Two and a half times the buffer.
Two and a half times what?
Buffer, so if the buffer's twenty feet, the house has to be fifty feet away. If the buffer is forty feet, then that house has, then, uh, then it has to be, uh,
Do you think it can be fifty percent increase?
Yeah.
And, and keep, keep, keep in mind, if they have a narrow lot, it's a crap, I can't meet that setback and still build on my one acre lot. They'll come for variance.
No, I, I agree.
We don't have to accept it or we can accept.
Out of all of these, no doubt, I think there's gonna be a lot of variance. I think the most common variance is someone's gonna want an extra couple of units. Vacant lot, they can build four units. You know, but this pans out a lot faster. And, you know, the truth is, is that.
Yeah, I'm thinking of one right, right now that's.
So, um, you're probably gonna see requests for variance. It's gonna. Keep in mind, we're really interested in, in this exercise, making sure that that. Wouldn't have to come to the board, in fact, they're going right to building. Comfortable accepting this code in all iterations, they go right to building permit. So it's those double-wide lots where someone can get a two family, right to building permit. Is there any extra distance that we want there? You know, and then the two family, that's the easy conversation. And it might be setbacks are the same, but let's make sure there's at least a minimum separation of fifty feet to another structure. You never know if the house next door, non-conforming.
I already said, anything over three units is a different ballgame as far as setbacks. You gotta have more of a distance, you gotta have a buffer. And then keep in mind, even if they might like six units on, I don't know, what, three acre piece or two acre piece and they say, yeah, we can make it work, they still have to get an onsite wastewater. And I can tell you, most of the land in this R twenty zone over here, the water table is high, it's terrible soil, clay. Some like shale. So, I mean, it's not really the best soil conditions for onsite wastewater treatment. There are some here, but if they don't have sewers, like, just the beginning of Fairview has sewers. I, I don't think any, anyone else has sewer except on seventeen. Very small section of Hazard Street, very small.
So, I'm gonna start with a, 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 a two-family approach. Where the regulatory setback would be, distance from property line will be the same as a single. Distance to structure, how about, uh, we start at fifty feet. Keep it in there, can always readjust as we go. Now let's have the conversation on a three to five. Three to five, what are we thinking about for a setback on that? You're in a residential zone, this is, you're looking at what the single families and the two families have to offer. If you're three to five, now we've got a more significant sized project. What kind of setback from the property line? What kind of setback from the nearest structure? And when I say nearest structure, I think we all agree, we're talking about a residential structure. If you're, if you happen to be, uh, within that distance to a commercial structure, I think everyone's like, the commercial structure's probably gonna be okay.
I think it needs to be the primary structure, not garage.
That's a good point. And I, I was, I was thinking the same, but that's a good point. Yeah, I thi- I thi- I think that primary structure's the right, a primary residential structure. Let me ask you this, we're gonna start to see more ADUs. Are you comfortable that a bigger project, let's say someone's got a house and then in the corner, the rear corner of their property, they have an ADU? Do you need any particular protection?
And I'm not opposed to leaving it the same for commercial, for tricks of variance. I don't think they should have to do the whole fifty feet because it's commercial structure. Cause you don't know the commercial.
Keep in mind, when we get into some of these bigger uses and we're talking about a separation from structure to structure and we start talking about a hundred feet or two hundred feet, cause we're talking about ten units. That's where you might wanna say, well, let's, we don't, they don't need that relief from a commercial structure. And it, it's not common, but some of these houses might find themselves near a commercial structure. Um, and, you know, we want someone coming in for a variance if, uh, they've, they're, they're well clear of any residential, but there happens to be a commercial near them. Should they be coming in or not? So, three to five, um.
Saying a hundred feet separation?
It would be a hundred feet separation, um, between structure to structure.
Five, cause now you're going three to five, you know?
I mean, we, we also can break it up. If you guys feel like, you know what, Doug, let's do three family as its own and then let's do four to six. Uh, there's a lot of ways to spin this guy.
In an R twenty big lot. Say you got all, half acre lots in there, all single-family dwellings, and then you just got this big lot. Six-unit building. To me, it's just.
But that's the thing.
You don't think it does, right? But look what just happened with the church on Fairview, right? Look what, right across the street.
But it was, it was a church. It wasn't a single-family home.
Right, right.
You just have to conscious of the big lot.
Right.
Like in your area, Mike, if you have one big lot, would you want a three, six-unit next to you? And that's what you're gonna think about. Because that big lot can, can make a, make a big dent in a, in an area that's.
So for six units, what would, what would they need? Over, over three acres? Three acre lot, but then the setbacks is gonna be the driver.
Even the three unit.
Were you saying you're opposed to them all together or you, you just want them?
There was no houses in my, in, in, on my lot, you could put a, a three unit.
Talking about adding setbacks, that kind of restrict it to protect the neighbors or are you talking about, I just don't want them?
I just would be concerned about. A big allot in an R twenty, because I don't think anybody in an R twenty would want six units next to it.
Truth is, there's gonna be opportunity for that by right, where we're headed. And I'm not saying it's common, but there will be larger lots. I mean, we, we were looking at one on the screen.
Yeah.
Get that one off.
But I, I think, I mean, the idea is that they're not common. And when you have a larger lot, generally it doesn't find itself in the rhythm of the pattern of the neighborhood. I mean, I think we're all kind of interested in making sure we don't break up the character of a neighborhood. You look down a block, see a pattern of streets. The last thing you want is to see a pattern of houses and then in the middle of that pattern, someone's got a six-unit apartment complex. That doesn't look like the character. But to get six units, you need three acres. That three acre lot didn't find itself in the middle of that neighborhood. It looks like that, um, that property we were looking at. It looks like it's kind of like a tucked away, uh, maybe, maybe near other zones in an, in an awkward spot, not probably fitting the pattern. Or in that one, it was actually behind some of those houses. There was a pattern of neighborhood, they would be well behind them.
I guess my question is, would you rather see six single-family houses on that three acres or would you rather see six?
Uh, if you were a neighbor, you'd probably rather see the six single-family houses, but, I mean, the, the, is that, you know, we wanna open the door to, uh, to be open to multi-family, so we have to kind of swallow that on any of these projects. You know, we could probably say, you know, ho, there's twenty acres here. Would you rather see, uh, forty, you know, regular single families or would you rather see potentially, you know, forty unit comp, you know, big complex? Most people would say, man, that thing could be five hundred feet away. I'd rather it be single-family house. I just don't like the idea of there being an apartment back.
The fact is, you're not gonna put single. How many, six? It's what, seven hundred and twenty feet of frontage or build a road. We know that's not, in reality, we're two beds and a bunch of excess land. And then they're gonna take the excess land.
Well, that was just my concern.
No, I, I, no, I think, I mean, that's the thing we gotta be wrapping arms around is that.
It's not we're making it, you know, the, making it in as code, not special use permit.
No, well, that's, that's the thing is I want, I want everyone to be mindful that we have to be thoughtful of what's the worst version of a buy-right project? And can we still live with it?
You could authorize a number of units. No buildings. Units. A lot. Redo. Nice, and they gotta come here for development plan review. They gotta come in for development plan review.
Well, that, that part we probably, they would be able to retain the rights of a minor. They need relief. I don't think in that, we, the town couldn't force a six-unit project to come into the board, but we can if they need relief. If we're heading for a place where we don't want any structure to have more than two units, that's a very different code. You know, and I would say, you know, hey, if that's the pleasure of the board, we can entertain that, but I think we were thinking of, there's a world in which there is a path to seek more units than that in one structure. It's just a matter of where's that fit, where does that, you know, what's? It's just a matter of where's that fit, where does that, you know, what's the distance? Is there a distance? I mean, in my mind, I think we should keep in mind that although in the pattern of a street and a block. It's hard to imagine someone squeezing in an apartment. It's not hard to imagine in certain contexts like the lot we were just looking at, where it'd be behind everyone's houses, they give you the separation distance, and they give you a buffer. Suddenly everyone's like, well, that's fine. There's a way where these projects come across and they can seem intimidating, and then there's a way where you realize, no, I'm, I'm glad we allowed it. Glad we would, we would, we had a path for them to follow. So. Yeah, three to five, thank you Glenn, he's trying to keep us on task.
Cause we, we, his brilliant mind's just burning away in here.
And it's yours.
It ain't mine. I'm coming with ceiling tile and saying, okay, this is fifty feet. Making a hundred, that's, that's my Homer Simpson math. Three to five, you know, three to five, if you're sticking to it. If you're sticking to three to five.
I just wanna be conscious that we get beat up when it fits the code.
Right.
It's the zoning.
Right, so, so three to five, so stru- structure to structure, should it be, uh, you know, a hundred? And then buffer would be, or greater than, like he brought up, uh, thirty or forty feet, the boundary, whichever's greater. You know, if, is that situation, could that present itself?
You could do west of one of those, too.
You'll never get there, thank God, keep talking.
Yeah, no, so, so three to five, a one hundred foot separation distance from structure to structure. Um, how about setbacks, so, so I'm assuming setbacks are probably heading for something a little more than what the, the, yeah. Okay, so setbacks is a little more, um, that's enough for me to work with. Uh. Separation distance a hundred feet. Buffer, minimum landscaped buffer. Now let's keep in mind, you go back to that buffer code, Alex, do you still have that thing?
Like ten feet.
Thinking of that forty acres. A lot of units. That was a nice development.
Thanks, Alex.
They did the cluster.
Imagine that this code had a breakout, it wasn't just one category of multifamily, we had a category for three to five. What would you wanna see as your minimum buffer between three to five at the single family property? It's hard to imagine.
Talking about a, a, a landscape.
We're talking about a landscape buffer which can be met, twenty feet? Now that, that buffer, if it doesn't exist, if it doesn't exist, we could have code that says this shall be supplemented. And the supplement doesn't have to be twenty feet width of planted dabrovites, that would be insane. You would plant staggered row, a three, one row. But if they had an existing buffer, you'd say, leave that twenty feet there and don't touch it.
Yeah, but if it wasn't sufficient screening, then I would.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm more concerned about screening than buffer.
No, I, I agree, I agree. It's, it's a buffer, twenty feet doesn't actually get you a lot of opaqueness.
The multifamily, what I'd be worried about is the headlights from cars, parking, turning around, tiny backyard, backyard.
They do a lot.
Yeah. So.
It's now, it's no longer a driveway that just goes into your house. Now it's a parking lot which you're gonna be backing and turning and.
There's no doubt, once we get into three to, structures that have three to five units, there's gonna be a parking area. So we're basically talking about screening as being a primary issue, one hundred foot separation distance from structure to structure, just to make sure no one's on top of each other.
Forty feet from the property line.
Yeah, and then, we adjust those setbacks up a little bit, but then it's all about having a screen of some type.
Yeah, we probably have something that requires rational decision, be like something like.
No, they're not gonna pay for that. I've. I think we're gonna write the code that will say we want a minimum twenty foot, uh, buffer, landscaped buffer. Uh, that, um, shall be supplemented with additional plantings in areas where the buffer does not provide a sufficient screen. Now that language is actually extremely discretionary. What's a, what's a sufficient screen of a landscape buffer? You know, someone would say, you know, I look just right, right there, I can see the building on the other side.
Now, Mike, those units would have to be sprinkled, right? Over three, over a certain amount of units.
Like you just run into building, buildings these days, you're not trying to, you're not trying to regulate them?
Well, it's a mall sprinkled.
Easy put them out.
So does everyone feel comfortable on a three to five approach would be, increase the setbacks, one hundred foot separation distance, twenty foot. Landscape buffer, to be supplemented in areas where, uh, there's not an adequate screen. Now that, to be supplemented in areas where there's not adequate screen, to be honest, staff is gonna have to. Pressure on staff to be like, well, is there adequate or not? And it's like, geez, it depends on the time of the year.
Nope.
Depends on, uh, you know, the mood of the person that day. You know, it depends on whether there was a neighbor looking over their shoulder while they were trying to make it determinate. So that's a subjective decision, but.
Gives us a starting point.
You know, if, if you're in a, um, R twenty.
Yeah.
How is that, how is that a? Do you have a, a six foot high fence? Provide a lot of screening, but it's, it's not so.
Fence is not a bad screen.
Can we add that in as a requirement?
Yeah, we can.
For multifamily, it's required a six foot. Six foot decorative fence.
Yeah, stockade fence. Yeah, the only area where we wouldn't be able to do a six foot tall stockade fence is if it's like towards the street. Front setback area, and that, that creates sightline issues.
But if we require it for a neighborhood, I think that, that, I think that would be beneficial.
I'll tell you what, for, for light pollution of headlights. It's huge. And still, it can be a great sound mitigator. But a lot of people would say, well, you know what, I've got a two story house, you get onto that second story, I'm looking right over the top of that. So that's where the landscape buffer comes in, because usually those guys.
That's where you get.
It might be, you know, and, and we're putting this, uh, to be supplemented, we probably have standards in there, at some point, we're looking for like an eight foot, half planting minimum. Certain type, and those guys can grow two feet a year. Buffers, you know, they may not cover the visualization on year one, but come four or five, those things would stick and fall.
Well, it's dead, but.
Dead, okay, good, I'm just saying, it was just a battery issue.
Oh, we went past either.
Yeah, we might be.
Can we require a fence for a three to five family that goes in on a single?
Yeah, yeah, we can require a fence. I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea, to be honest, the fence is probably, to some people, easier and cheaper to put up. Um, but we probably would be looking at some combination of both.
Yo, combination of both, that's.
Yeah, to be all combination.
Oh, uh, cold, if you hit the front of the house, it drops off on you.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think a lot of these projects will probably be coming behind houses, sides, you know, like, we're probably not looking at a lot of stuff where that big multifamily found itself right up near a right of way. I mean, we have to be ready, and we have to be thinking about a front setback that we think is appropriate, cause some of these lots are gonna be frontage. We're gonna be talking about distance to a nearest structure, and they're gonna say, guess where? Uh, I'm farthest away from a structure, right on the street. Um, all right, so I think we've got some good progress here, six to ten, I'm, I'm not gonna break it up, because I wanna make a little more. Six to ten, is that about the s- the sizing of units, six to ten feel right?
Sitting on a one hundred foot distance between structures, what are we thinking at a six to ten? Are we thinking a hundred fifty, two hundred feet separation distance?
Six, six to ten, four.
So you want six to ten.
I came with this sprinkler game on this.
We, we want six to ten in our twenty, I guess that's the answer.
Well, if we don't want it in our twenty, then the only other zone we're talking about are commercial industrial. Cause we're not gonna, if we don't want it in our twenty, we don't want it in the R two, or the R three, or the.
I just wanna.
Well, I mean, where, is Glenn's house is R five, right? Is there a zone that we could create around his house?
He don't have five acres, he's not conforming.
Mr. Density up? With my family that surrounds me, we get, we total more than that, but.
But, I mean, is that property that's sale off McCott, got like three access points, fifty feet wide to get in and out? Lots of commercial property.
Six acres.
It probably has access to sewers, it's six acres.
Oh, there is.
Been in R twenties. It's R twenty zone. That's prime. The condos or?
General business.
Zone general business? Oh, okay.
The general, that's behind the, uh.
It's all general business.
Yeah. That's your, that's general business.
Okay, so it doesn't really matter, okay. That's a, that's a perfect spot for.
You still could look at it, you still could look at it and give more.
They should put in a couple of condo buildings.
I agree. So, uh.
Over sixteen units.
Six to ten units. Hundred fifty separation distance, two hundred separation distance? This isn't.
Gonna figure ten, right?
No, again, we're talking a minimum of how much land area, twenty thousand still hold per unit?
Twenty, the, the two per unit, so hold, so let's say you got a ten unit, you have to have twenty, no, I'm sorry, five acres.
That's what I would.
That's what I was thinking, I think that that's.
I agree, I agree, that's, that's what, that's why I asked the question, cause I was starting to think, how many, how many parcels are there here that are five acres that?
Yeah, six to ten, he opened the, the, the conversation with that. Uh, that is commercial. I think it's, actually that might, that is a planned development.
Yeah, it is.
I agree with John, I think six to ten is.
Pushing it for R twenty anywhere, anyway, unless they wanna come in.
Unless you had sewers and water, if you had sewers, then you could open more units. So let me ask you this.
Well, I'll show you, you know which, remember the one on Route three, they came in for the variance, go commercial, it didn't fly, whatever happened? It's like three acres, but that'd be perfect, or something like that.
Let, let, let's take the hypothetical, to exaggerate it. They wanna build more than five units. They could be a thousand feet away from the nearest structure. Something that we would wanna regulate by right?
I want them to come in. Or they, and they come in as a compliment, they could still come in as a compliment. Well, they have a, they have a mechanism to do something with the property.
Still doing.
We're saying, we're not gonna let you do it by right. That's kinda what was.
If you put a setback, a thousand feet. Then the use is allowed. If someone doesn't wanna bring a comp permit for, for whatever reason, but they wanna see what they can do with a variance, they would come in and ask for a variance. And let's just say they have a piece of property where we think seven units is appropriate. But we want them to have a path, if we don't allow it. Then comp permit becomes their only, their zones becomes their only tool, and that might be the board's decision. You would say, if they gave us, they'd allow it, which means that there's a path, the use to be allowed, which means there's a path for them to somehow also seek.
I'm leaning towards we need more affordable housing in the R twenty zone, and if they want, come in as a compliment, cause we're not gonna allow it by right.
Six, I think six.
Three to five.
What, what is the co- I mean, we were working on the compliment, the R twenty zone, doesn't that encourage affordable housing? Multi-unit, cause of the sewers and water and availability and the lots.
It's interesting, um, the comp permit is a unique. We have someone that it gives us a comp permit, they sought variance to give us twenty percent affordable. There are people where they'd love the flexibility to not give twenty-five percent, but they'll give us something. And when we say, hey, you need variances for this, but we're gonna want some affordable to give it to. So keep in mind, there's, um, there's potential for a, a. Project above five units in one structure, where we might say, we'd rather have an option that's not a comp permit.
But it all comes down to money, because no one's gonna buy the five acre lot. If they know they gotta buy right, and they gotta do the variance, and they only have to do twenty percent affordable instead of twenty-five percent affordable, that's just try to look market. The, if the intent is to get some affordable housing, not overbuild. App it at the three or five. And if they're forced to do affordable, as you said, they might say, yeah, we'll offer to do that, we can make the project work. Don't think they're not going back to the seller and saying, listen, the only way I'm gonna be able to do what I want to do on this, by giving some affordable, I can't pay you what I often am paying less. So it doesn't really accomplish, you know, it, it, like I said, it all comes down to money. What's it gonna cost them per unit to buy a hundred twenty? App it at five, and let them come in with a comp.
But keep in mind what will happen, let's say you got, uh. Let's say you got ten acre, I'm sorry.
Not gonna find them.
Say you got two and a half acre. Could do five units. If we say anything above six units, a different use that's not allowed, they can't get a variance asked for. That would actually trigger a use variant. It'd be one thing if they had. Technically, it's the variances for the density, or the variances for the area, slice it either way. I want five units, I have two acres, by right give four, I want five. I have two and a half acres, like six units, you'd say, not possible. Does that, that, you know, I'm, I'm playing devil's advocate.
They can, come in for a compliment?
No, they're coming in for, to see if they can get a byright project, or no, I'd say they're coming in to see if they can get a variance, to get the extra unit or two. You'd say, well, I, you, you'd say the answer is go get a comp.
Yep. Because what good is the six units gonna do? You're just gonna add density, they're gonna be market rate.
On a comp permit, you could get seven units per acre. They're giving you twenty-five percent affordable. They're able to say, I, I don't care what you thought you wanted for separation. So that, that's, that's the game we play, and keep in mind, an aggress, we haven't seen, well, we've seen a, I don't wanna name projects, we've seen a pre-app for a. We're gonna be covered in a swallow, we've seen comp permits in which I think the developer found middle ground with us. Comp permit is a tool where if it's an aggressive developer, they do not need to yield. Comp permit is a tool where if it's an aggressive developer, they do not need to yield to our care.
Again, let's go back to the buffering and the, and the land development regulations, make sure that if they do something like that, they want to bring them to the member, they still need to sewers or an onset, they still need to have audible water, they still need to have. It still needs to work. And if they came in and said, yeah, unfortunately, the only thing we're going to be able to do is we want that many units, but they're all going to be one bedroom. So, I mean, when you factor all those things in, how many of those cases do you think you're going to get? These own, probably lots of our own. I mean, you see these lots right here, but some of these are actually open space for, for something, like that's what all this is. That's not, that's not the right, this is forced to feel middle school. It's just that.
Well, let's talk about, let's say we say in one structure, more than five units isn't going to be allowed there. What about one property, multiple two, two families that are all on one lot? Are we more comfortable with that? Let's say they, they want six separate two families, all on one lot. Our code might say that's actually a twelve unit multifamily, but that to this board, I think strikes you differently. You have to land for it, and it's not all in one structure, there's comfort around it, is that fair?
But are they then going to come in for plain unit development and put a condominium in there?
No, we, that would be a project where we, we could write the code to say that you're allowed to seek, um, combinations of units on a property along as no one's structure has the units. I would probably regulate it differently than just saying, oh, that's a two family, and we're going by two family, but I'd say, no, it's, it's, it's a multifamily complex in which they, they can't have more than that. So, does that, does that context of everyone giving you multiple little structures kind of change the dynamic? You'd accept twelve units potentially on one property, go back to the property we were looking at. What else?
It does, and again, if you, you have to have a, a distance between build and regulation, a lot of it's fire, you know? And you're going to have your parking requirements, the impervious, they can meet all that criteria.
Probably mesh is okay with the neighborhood, I mean, it's this one, would you accept a series of three family? So, let's say we allow structures to have up to. You accept two of them on one property. If it was big enough, and you had big distance.
And that, you mean, uh, ten units on?
Well, the, not one, not one big building, you have to break it up into smaller buildings.
So you got two buildings, five acres.
I mean, a five unit building probably looks more like a townhouse, it's a big, complex townhouse.
Each unit is fifteen feet wide.
Especially if we say you can't have flat roofs, they're going to deny.
The building's going to be seventy-five feet wide.
So, I think then, I think staff have enough to work with, what I'd like to try to put some time and effort into is what does code look like? When we're willing to accept more units on a piece of land, but we don't want more units in one structure in a certain way. I'd like to think about and maybe research what that kind of code looks like. Because I, I'm getting the feeling like you're open, so more units on a piece of land, you're just not open to more units in a building.
Versus three and four and five, five pack.
Let me do some research on that, let me ask this last question. Do you guys make the town council better than I do, and this is not meant for any individual person, but. Think it's going to be fairly in line with the culture of this board, more conservative, or unsure either way?
Well, how would they step into the first round? I'd see them being more conservative.
I'll, I'll put it to you this way, um, and I'm okay with this, the approach to the first round is I was prepared to really, you know, be ready to answer detailed substantive questions. The solicitor had a different idea, which is, I'm going to review this, and I think that as long as we present that this is just legally proper and there's a good idea here, you don't need to go through a huge explanation. It was approved, everything that we did, um, we took it with approval.
I don't think they've objected of any.
They're elected members, you know?
They haven't.
Council is going to want to have an idea, apparent, like right now, the idea is that if, if they trust staff, they trust this board and they trust the solicitor, they may not want to have a huge explanation, they just may want to know, what you've done is the best concept for Coventry, there's a lot of ins and outs, but you tried to protect our interests and you tried to open the door to different units. And that might be enough. Um, I don't know if they're going to need a huge explanation, but I'm asking because if someone says, hey, town council, uh, did you know there's a new code, um, being proposed on multifamily, if someone were going to be like, not in my town. Do you have to explain to them? Maybe it's a first step, maybe we revisit this at a later date, ever, but we already have those. I think this has probably given me, and ultimately my staff, uh, good feedback to think about this and maybe come back with something in writing for a future. But this is really helpful, because this is, this is, I think we got to the meat, uh, we got to some points where we understand how to structure this back with something a little more refined for you. I mean, I, I think, I appreciate all the time you've given me, so I think we're, we're ready to. But my last question might help me, would you accept more than six units in one building in a commercial or industrial zone? So when we come back, we'll have an approach for a residential zone, the R twenty, and we'll have a thought on a commercial approaches. Rod, do you mind making a motion to it? The motion you just made that, make the announce.
One second.